Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are here to hold a public hearing on the application of the... Microphone's not working? No? Easier to move it. We are here this evening for a public hearing on the application of the East Hampton Village Ambulance to expand their operating territory. I am the hearing officer. My name is Edward Boyd. By way of background, I was a federal prosecutor for a number of years, was a judge in Suffolk County for probably 28 years, and I've been in the EMS service 40-plus years. Presently, I'm vice chairman of Suffolk Remsco. I'm going to ask each of the members of the panel to please very briefly introduce themselves so that the audience and the people who are giving presentations know to whom they are going to be speaking.
Good evening. Gregory Minioti. I represent Suffolk County Department of Fire Rescue and Emergency Services with a background in EMS and communications, and I am on the Remsco council.
Good evening. Paul Marrow with Suffolk County EMS. I'm the Suffolk County EMS coordinator.
Philip Cameron. I've been providing EMS care to the East End of Long Island for the past 43 years. Have been, and I'm the East End Ambulance Coalition representative to Remsco and past chair.
I'm Robert France. I'm a member of Remsco. I am also chair of the New York State Volunteer Ambulance and Rescue Association, District 7 in Suffolk County, and I am also a member and on the board of directors of the Huntington Community First Aid Squad.
I'm Sean Edward. A member of Remsco, I'm the assistant director for Stony Brook Hospital EMS.
Without further ado, we shall go right into the presentation. Who is here to speak on behalf of the application?
Brad Pinskey of the Pinskey Law Group. I represent the Village of East Hampton, and I thank you very much for holding the hearing tonight. I understand it's being livestreamed, I think, so we very much appreciate the right and the ability of the public to know. So I'm going to present short, briefly. We think the application is very straightforward. We know that the definition of need is defined in policy 0606. The definition of need, I won't read at nauseam, but we have to provide concrete need, not opinions, not hopes, not wants. So we believe we have 40 years of need. So the Village of East Hampton presently holds operating a territory for the village itself. We noticed, even though the village has been serving the area of the town in the East Hampton Water Supply District, that's what the town calls it, and the Northwest Fire Protection District, even though the village has been serving it, we realized a while ago that the ambulance service certificate did not include that territory. So even though we're the only primary ambulance service serving the town in that area, we decided it is proper to apply. Nobody complained, nobody raised an issue, nobody said we needed to. It was just when I got involved, we decided that we should get in on the certificate. So the village has served these territories continuously since prior to 1975. 1975, as you all know certainly, is the year where ambulance service certificates and ambulance registration came into law, and the village had the territory long before that. It was always in the village's name at that point. Now, we realized when this wasn't included in the ambulance service certificate, as I said, we've got to clean this up, and that's why we're here. So the town of East Hampton has contracted with the village continuously for ambulance services for decades. Again, we've been serving it for decades. The town and the village have recently signed another two-year contract, and it's only two years because that's the longest that a town is permitted under the law to sign an ambulance contract for. And to the steno, if I ever go too quickly, either throw something or give me a dirty look. So the town and village signed another agreement just recently for another two years for both fire protection, but relevant here also for ambulance services for those two territories. The population is from a 2021 census. We know that the village has 1,500 or more residents, and the town has over 21,000. Of course, we know what happens in the summer, when all the ambulance services, you know very well what happens in the summer, your ambulance call is triple. So the village's staff, they have a fleet of three advanced life support ambulances and two rapid response emergency vehicles, which are both equipped ALS. The Village of East Hampton staffs three ALS ambulances 24/7, 365 days a year. We use eight paid paramedics, 10 paid emergency medical technicians, and we are proudly using the services of 30-plus volunteers. Call volume defines need. Our call volume is 1,400 to 1,500 calls per year. It's not going down, and over the decades, it only goes in one direction, like all of your services, it goes up. 56% approximately are basic life support calls, 44% are advanced life support calls. We transport approximately 96% of the patients to a hospital. Response times, which are always deceiving, is 12 to 13 minutes on average, but this, of course, includes the lower priority calls where we're not responding lights and sirens. In 2023, now, we submitted the application a number of months ago, so it didn't have the full year, but this now does have the full year in our stats. So we have 964 total responses to the two areas, which we're calling the expansion area, but to the water and to the fire protection district. There are 1,474 total responses in the entire year. I've been, I've represented four Remscos. I've been an EMT for 22 years. I've been a fire chief for many years, been in the fire service for 32 years, which compared to some of you makes me look like the new guy on the block. But my long time working with regional EMS councils, and I represent probably, well, between fire departments and fire districts and ambulance services, I probably represent over 300, 400, 500. But for ambulance services, I've been doing this for a while, and the one thing I have learned over my 27, 28 years of representing ambulance services is that need is everything and response times matter. And the Village of East Hampton is strategically located to provide a rapid response, both BLS and ALS, in a very timely manner. There is nobody else who is closer or competing. I will note that there are no other services who will be negatively affected by our continued service, again, since 1975 and before. The support for the application has been overwhelming, and our application includes numerous letters of support. For the public's knowledge, we have supplemented our application this morning, because we just received it, from the town of East Hampton, most importantly, since it's their area, which gave us a letter we've submitted to the council with a overwhelming letter of recommendation and support for our application. And we would suggest that the town of East Hampton should be the most vocal voice in this application. So we have no letters of opposition that we are aware of unless they were sent directly to you. We've never been notified of them. We did a certified mailing to the entire county. There's a little bit of question in 0606, which I know they'll solve at some point, but whether you're just supposed to send the letters to the area or to the county, we mailed certified letters to the entire county. So a few quick notes. There was some question previously whether this was a municipal operating authority. This is not. We are not going under the municipal CON process. We decided, for full fairness, to go through the full process, hence why we're here. So we're proceeding under the same laws as any other ambulance service. The DOH EMS, the Bureau, has issued a letter stating that this application is legally appropriate, and hence we're here. There's no prohibitions, nothing that legally prohibits this application. We've clearly established need. I can't see how call volume and response time does not establish need. If we were to be pulled out of the town, there would be great public harm. We, like all the Hampton-located ambulances, support each other. We support with mutual aid, and the loss of this ambulance to the town would greatly impact patient care. With that, I would ask the panel if there are any questions I could address now, and I would ask if I could reserve the last speaker spot to address anything that the public may raise.
I know. I have a question, Mr. Pinskey. How is this expansion district funded?
Taxpayers.
And that has, there is an agreement in place where a percentage of the funds that are raised by taxes in that district goes to the ambulance?
Yes, so the town has two districts. The town raises funds from its taxpayers and pursuant to a contract pays the village, again, this year, another two-year contract. And so the town uses the tax money to pay the village. The village combines it with its tax funds and then provides service to the entire village and these two areas.
And can you tell me approximately how much money is raised in the expansion district by taxes each year?
I do have with me the mayor. I also have the director of fire and EMS with me. I do have probably the copy of the contract. I'm not prepared at the moment. I would ask, do we know? We will look, and before we come back, I have a copy of the contract. We will answer that.
Thank you.
And in candidness, I forget if it's separated out from fire, because it's a combined fire EMS contract, so I'm not sure that they separate the amount specifically.
And as you mentioned, the majority of the calls answered by the East Hampton Village ambulance are for the district that we intend to expand into?
Correct.
As opposed to the village itself?
Yeah, roughly 2/3, 1/3, but yes, majority based strictly on population are outside.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
With the expansion, will all of the existing mutual aid contracts with the neighboring agencies and with the county stay in place?
Yes, absolutely nothing will change. Again, really, this was just a longstanding oversight, as happens throughout the state, where people just realize they're, you know, serving a territory that's not listed in the ambulance service certificate, so absolutely nothing will change. If I should mention in response, sir, to your question, there is no billing that's going on. This is strictly taxpayer-funded, so we are not billing for services either, and there's no plans to do so.
Under the current mutual aid plan, are the ALS first responder units also included?
We would respond with whatever is requested. If it's just an ALS intercept, then the paramedics have the options or leave taking that.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Who is next on the speakers list?
My name is Teresa Bertha, and up until November, I was a volunteer with the Ambulance Association, which is a total different entity from the department. And one of the reasons why I'm here is because I am a resident of the Northwest District, and it comes down to, I don't trust these guys because they lie. And I've seen them in action, and they are in the process of getting rid of volunteers under bogus circumstances. I was let go because of this policy that was hung up in the run room in East Hampton in public view that addresses the mutual aid policy. And at the bottom, I will read it to you. At no time will East Hampton Village EMS be stripped of all paid providers to cover a neighboring district, meaning that if only one provider, ALS or BLS, is left in district, that one provider does not go on mutual aid calls. When I brought this to the attention of some people, powers that be found out, and moved it to the paid providers' room, and told people that it was an old policy and it's not there anymore, meaning it's not hanging there anymore. And then when I went into the paid providers' office, their bunk room, as everybody does say hello, I saw that it was hanging there, and it was still a policy. And I took a picture of it. Then it was seen on camera that I had gone into the run room supposedly against policy. I was not allowed in the room, I was told, and I was not allowed to read this, even though it addresses volunteers in response policy. So the next day, I was told there was an investigation, and that I had an ulterior motive, and I made the paid providers feel very uncomfortable. But it was all about this because the mayor had lied and told Springs Department that it wasn't a policy anymore, and Mary Mott, the chief, said that I had no right to be in that room until it was the day after that she sent out an email saying that no volunteers are allowed in the paid providers' room anymore. So I don't trust them. They lie. I also see that they're pushing out more people because we are trying to fundraise to continue with our appeal of how they took our certificate. Somebody raised money, and the next day, he was canned. 20 years as an EMS volunteer. So it's not about our fight, the Ambulance Association, fraternal organization, and our $300,000 against the department. It's that I don't trust these guys. They fumbled the rollout, they lied to us, they have no integrity. What they think, what they say, and what they do are three different things, and then they make the situation fit what they want you to know. We were told nothing was going to change. We love our volunteers, you can still work with us. And then the mayor says in the press that as of May, they had no intention of working with the volunteers, and one by one, they've gotten rid of us. So I don't trust them, and I don't think you should trust them either. We also, we have a lawsuit against them that is going to appeal, and just the fact that now, all of a sudden, they think they have to apply for this, why didn't you think of that before? You're not qualified to run this, and I don't think it's fair. And I'm a resident of Northwest, and I've told my family, if I get sick, don't call the ambulance.
Thank you.
Geraldine Rule. Thank you for this opportunity to address this application, and thank you all for your many, many years of service to the volunteer ambulances and EMS in Suffolk County. This is quite a mess. This village administration isn't fit to replace the voluntary ambulance services of the East Hampton Village Ambulance Association. We, the members of the East Hampton Village Ambulance Association and the local residents of our ambulance service area, ask that Remsco deny the approval of the certificate for the need, certificate of need applied for by the village. They've politicized EMS services. Medicine's not supposed to be about politics. It's not about treating your friends better than everybody else. It's not about rewarding donors. It's not about specially taking care of wealthier residents. And yet, that's what's occurred. The mayor's an elected official, and he serves the Village of East Hampton. Only 1,500 registered voters are eligible to vote for or against him, and he's crafting and implementing ambulance response policy for thousands of other people in the district, and they're all ineligible to vote for him or hold him accountable. We were an independent ambulance for a reason, and this is why. We were contracted by East Hampton Town for 48 years and provided service equally and without prejudice to anyone who needed it, and without politics, and without a loyalty test to see who they liked and who they didn't. The new municipal department uses only the volunteers they like. Therefore, they're denying low set points and benefits to other certified EMTs of the volunteer membership and to all those who are not politically affiliated with their ideals. You serve at the pleasure of the department. You don't get a hearing, you just get dismissed. Members who have served 30 or more years as volunteers in EMS are denied access to the facilities, the gym, the camaraderie, and the benefits of membership and the friendship that they've spent an entire lifetime earning. The mayor's municipal department uses untrained drivers. They just put a village employee behind the wheel without the customary certification of their skills that was strictly required by the EHVAA. We demanded that drivers at least take the EMT course. They didn't have to pass it, but they had to take it, so that when I asked a driver to go get me an OPA, he knew what it was. They're pulling people, municipal employees, from their paid jobs to drive the ambulances during the day when they don't get drivers to sign on. They ran themselves ragged this last summer, and it's, and this is just not sustainable. They're just too proud to admit that. Our organization of volunteered tears had absolutely no intention of serving as a fraternal organization, which is what we told our new mission would be. We were never asked. We were told that we were going to be moving forward and that our role in his department would be, and it was offensive. It was offensive. We're trained medical professionals. Many of us have advanced degrees. We want to perform patient care and emergency services. We're not in this for the parties. Jerry Larson is not now and has never been a member of the East Hampton Village Ambulance Association, and he didn't have any business crafting the new mission for our organization. We're an independent 501(c)(3) charity and always have been. We intend to continue that mission regardless of whether or not we're a responding agency. The village can divorce us if it wants to and convert to a paid municipal service, that's their option, but in any divorce, you don't get to keep the house, the car, all the bank accounts, and all the money. This is what they're trying to do. Our organization still exists, and we can't be wiped from existence simply because they don't like us around. We learned in our FOIL request, there's never been an elected official or an employee of the village government that signed that ambulance service certificate renewal application. It was always a member of the volunteers. The Department of Health, when they amended this ambulance service certificate and put the village's name on it, never contacted our organization prior to amending it, and they did not perform due diligence before they transferred ownership of our certificate to the village. And they refused to talk to us when we tried to reach them. This ambulance service certificate does not belong to the village. It's always been the property of East Hampton Village Ambulance Association. Now, if they want to buy it, that's a different story, but they never offered. They called the Department of Health, they told them there was a spelling error on the ambulance service certificate and that it needed to be changed. And the next day, we had an amended certificate that didn't belong to us. Listen, there's a tremendous resentment to the mutual aid policy in the surrounding districts. It's as if, they seem to feel that calling for mutual aid is like a personal failure, that they're unable to take care of things. On the day that sparked all of this, we had two ambulances out of service, and one was still driving back from the hospital, we needed to call Springs. Our neighbors came and brought us an ambulance. Response times, they keep talking about response times, and they keep talking about ambulance response times. We all run a two-tier system. As an ALS provider, our first responder is on scene within three to seven minutes, delivering ALS care. The ambulance is just a ride to the hospital. It's okay if it takes a few minutes to rally a volunteer crew. It's not a big deal. We're doing really well. Most of the districts I've worked in have a 12 to 14-minute response time. That's not terrible, considering ALS is providing services the moment they arrive. Now, in that little presentation, they said there's been no opposition. I have letters, 342 letters from citizens in this ambulance district that are opposing this reorganization. These were presented to the village board in April or, April or May, I can't remember which one, but the originals were all presented to the village board. They've seen these. So what they told you tonight is that there's no opposition. That is untrue. There's a lot of opposition. There's a lot of people who like a 48-year history of meritorious service, and they want to continue it. In this binder, which I'm going to make a gift to you, I've got a summary of the events, I've got legal motions and letters supporting all the exhibits. I have emails, the denial of our motion to sue, and our intent to appeal it. A lot of these are legal documents. Judge, you'll be quite qualified to read through them. Newspaper reports. The New York Post called him the mayor of "Mean," national newspaper, because it's the way he deals with things, the way he treats people like the dirt under his shoe. And don't think he won't consider you the same way. These are people who just, they have no respect for the rule of law. We started a GoFundMe page just on Sunday to put together $1,700 to file an appeal. They swatted our GoFundMe page, they called GoFundMe and told us we weren't a legitimate We're standing right here in front of you. We've been serving this district for 48 years. I said I had to send articles of incorporation, I've had to send letters, I've had to send all kinds of stuff pleading my case so that it can be adjudicated in the executive offices of GoFundMe? I mean, this is insane. What I want to know is why are they so unwilling to make their case in a court of law? If this was all legit and it wasn't about stealing $380,000 and taking over the services and kicking us all out, what's it about? Why are they not willing to make the case in front of a judge? Our appeal was denied on a technicality we didn't file within 90 days. We feel the judge was an error, and we'd like to have someone else look at it. We plan on filing an appeal before the end of the month. If we prevail, whatever they're applying for here is going to have to be dismantled. We ask that you deny the approval of this application till the village reaches a settlement regarding the assets of the East Hampton Village Ambulance Association and the ambulance service certificate. There are still very serious issues in play here. I'm going to make a gift of this to you. I'd like to thank you, gentlemen, for your time and this opportunity to share my thoughts with you, and again, thank you all for your service to our county and to emergency medicine. It's been my pleasure to address you tonight.
Other than, excuse me. Hearing none, we'll move on to the next speaker.
The last name on the list is Brett. Are the last one or?
That was somewhat entertaining. Fortunately, this is a certificate of need, not a certificate of do you like the mayor or not. The question of whether the mayor is liked by a couple of people is not before the issue of this Remsco. What is before is whether there has been any opposition to the provision of ambulance services, not whether to... services, not whether two former members, one who quit, one who was terminated, likes the mayor or not. Now, funding is an issue. There is an allegation, and I'm not going to go through all the allegations because they're, have nothing to do with the certificate of need process. It has to do with a dispute between two former members, but the Association of Volunteers that does have a few hundred thousand dollars, that money does not support the ambulance services. Now, certain, in reference to your question before, the town contract is three point four million dollars, but it is combined fire and EMS. That funding without anything else other than village taxes is one hundred percent sufficient to fund the ambulance. The money of the association, to which these, some of the speakers are no longer members, does not play in that. The purpose of the association that's been referred to is not in any way to fund the village. I will notice, mention that Mary Mott, the actual president of the association, is here behind me. I've not asked her to speak. She doesn't need to speak. They are just an association of volunteers. The comments that the village is getting rid of the volunteers is untrue. Volunteers are numbering thirty. They are alive. They are strong. They function under the strong leadership of Mary Mott, the chief and president, and they serve the village happily. I will note to you a small technicality. The letters of opposition that allegedly were written are not opposition to the ambulance service. We have not yet heard one ambulance service come up and say that there's no need, need being the only question before this council. I will note that the referendum on the mayor's fitness, the state Department of Health has already determined as a matter of law and as a matter of procedure in this instance, that the village is fit and competent to provide the service. It would be beyond this council to make any other determination, but fortunately, the Department of Health has already determined the village to be fit and competent. As to those letters you have, that is apparently some people given misinformation about the volunteers, but doesn't address the ambulance service. Whether the ambulance service is provided by all volunteers, all paid staff or a combination, which in fact is provided by a combination, is irrelevant because they have a significant, very high response percentage, very good response time, and a very good staffing. So, you know, whether it's volunteer or paid, irrelevant, but it is staffed both by thirty-plus volunteers, eight paid. We are thankful. We thank you for your consideration of this. I have yet to hear any opposition to the application on the basis of need other than hurt feelings, so I do thank you. If there's any other information that's needed, we're happy to submit it. We think the application is complete, response times, call volume, capability to serve it. But if you have anything else that you desire from us, we are more than happy to provide it to you. Otherwise, as far as we're concerned, our presentation is done and our record is closed.
Thank you. Any questions from any members of the panel as to what we've heard tonight?
I do have one question. From a data perspective, since you've taken over at your position, is there a percentage of calls that you have not been able to respond to? Do you know that number, potential?
Yeah, we have a ninety-six percent response rate, but I should say, nothing's changed. We haven't taken anything over. All that's happened frankly is a couple of people quit, other people joined, but the village has always, is operating exactly the same way it always has. We recognize there's some confusion among some former members trying to confuse you, but the village is still staffed by the, almost the same volunteers, some more, some less, by paid staff. Nothing in the service has changed. As I opened with, the only thing that really has changed is we just realized that the expansion territories aren't listed on the certificate and they need to be, but nothing about the service has changed at all.
So ninety-six percent is what you respond to?
Ninety-six percent.
Okay, right.
We believe that, yeah.
Thank you.
I have just a clarification. You had said that you were hun, sorry.
I'll just say that.
You had said you were, everything was staying the same, hundred percent as far as the contracts with the county and the mutual aid agreement with the other town, other agencies within East End Ambulance. Can you address what the previous speaker, that document that was?
My name's Terry.
Terry, sorry. That was allegedly up in the building or?
Yeah, that policy is not accurate. It's not true. It's not right. I have the mayor here. The volunteers, there are drivers who are volunteers, EMS personnel who are volunteers. They respond. If, if the volunteer response is not quick enough, of course, or they're not in-house, then the paid will respond as well. We respond whatever gives us the fastest, most appropriate response time, and our numbers show it, statistics show it. Nothing's changed from four years ago to today. It's the same people serving. I hate to get into it, but I will for a moment. So, the East Hampton Volunteer Ambulance Association and its certificate of incorporation is formed for one purpose and one purpose only. And as certainly the judge knows, the, a not-for-profit corporation is obligated to only operate under its purposes. It cannot, it cannot operate outside its purposes. It would be ultra virus. And the East Ham, East Hampton Ambulance Volunteer Ambulance Association, which Ms. Bertha was a former member of, has, that association has one corporate purpose, and that corporate purpose is to assist in providing brotherhood, I'm quoting, and providing training to the volunteers and paid staff of the village. That is their only purpose. They do not hold a certificate of need. They don't have an ambulance certificate. They are not approved by the Department of Health to provide ambulance services. Now, that said, there was a question, right, of who's running the organization? A couple of members attempted to hold a coup, and it failed. A judge has dismissed the lawsuit. I don't know what more I can say. The Department of Health agrees that it's the village who's the service. They use volunteers. And again, the president of the association is here. So, I, it is unfortunate that there are some very vocal and disgruntled former people who would like to try to derail this, but it's so far beyond the question of need. But it's just a internal, personal, political dispute, but as far as the thirty volunteers, they're not here saying we can't provide services. The active volunteers continue to provide service alongside the paid staff. And the response times, which the mayor informs me actually are better than ninety-six percent now, keep going up. So, we're certainly doing a pretty good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll kind of stand here just in case.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak against what has been said in this rebuttal? This sorry rebuttal?
You're only going to deal with facts, so I can only give you a few facts. He mentions that he works with a lot of, Mr. Pinsky works with a lot of fire districts. He leaves out that he has a billing service, and that's a pertinent fact. We're told that you, excuse me?
The microphone.
Okay. He has a billing service. That was nicely let out. They give you the facts that you want to hear, and they don't give you the facts that give you a bigger picture about this. I was never let go from the ambulance association. I was kicked out of the department, two different things. So, they twist the truth. That's my point, is that you can't trust them and you really have to look into this. There's not thirty volunteers. There's twenty-two maybe. Your response times are great, but what about the signal threes, where they're sitting on scene, calling for someone to drive to the, to the hospital because volunteers aren't showing up and the mayor has to drive and the dispatchers have to drive and other people have to drive because they're begging for people to show up? Signal threes tell you a lot more about what's going on out in the field than our, our metrics were great before they did this. Now, they're saying they're better, but you're not listening to the radio and how discombobulated it is. I don't trust them to work in my district. That's my point. And still, the association is still active, except we were kicked out of the building and we can't have meetings. As far as I'm concerned, I'm part of the association. I would love to be back in the department, but not with these people. Can't trust them.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, everybody. So, I'm the mayor of the village of East Hampton. I haven't really enjoyed what I've heard tonight, but I've been in law enforcement with the village of East Hampton for thirty-four years. I was the chief of police for the final fourteen of my career, and then I ran for election. This ambulance issue has been going on for many years. If it wasn't for me as chief of police, we wouldn't even have had paid paramedics back then. Mary Mott, who was a very capable chief of our department, she was one of our only AEMTs that we had at the time, and we were losing volunteers. We were losing AMTs. We really were desperately in need of paramedics. Other departments around us were hiring paramedics, and we were not. I finally was able to convince our board, my board at the time, to start hiring paid paramedics, and that's what we did. So, when they sit here and say, you know, the paid paramedic or ALS is unseen within three minutes, the person who is unseen in three minutes is the paid paramedic. And then, we wait at a courtesy and we tone out for the volunteers, and we wait at a courtesy. We have paid personnel sitting in the ambulance waiting for the, for the paid, I mean, for the volunteer to show up and drive the ambulance or, or provide service. So, a lot of what they're saying is not true. I'm only here, I want to make the service better. It's clearly the village's responsibility to provide ambulance service. It's not an association, like the lawyer said, that was created to support the volunteer workers of the village of East Hampton. East Hampton Village has provided ambulance services since the nineteen twenties when they were, when they were incorporated. So, for them to sit here, they were only formed in two thousand and four, and the people who are here, who have been speaking negatively, are not even the real association. The real association is run by Mary Mott and Mary Ellen McGuire, who are in the back of the room, who also happen to be our chief of EMS and assistant chief. So, they're out raising money illegally to fund some coup that they had where they think they ousted the real president and vice president of the association. So, they're claiming they are, so I want you to understand the whole picture here, because you're only hearing one side, and it's, it's really very, not truthful at all what they're saying. So, I know I'm getting into too much here, and it gets very complicated, even the newspapers here, and they can't get it straight. It's a very complicated issue. They did put up a GoFundMe page, which, and they did try to solicit cash, cash donations, so they're, they're contacting people in our community, and they're saying, this is the East Hampton Village Ambulance Association, we need a cash donation? That's insane. And they're giving everybody a bad name, and they're making people in the community very concerned and not sure if they're going to get ambulance services. That's how much they've spun what's going on out here. And all they're in it for is they want the big money. They think they're going to get the money, buy an ambulance, and then start providing ambulance service. They are not a response agency. They are a fraternal organization. That's what they were created to do. And somehow, over the years, the village allowed them to take some operational control, which all I did was take back, because it's my responsibility to make sure the health and the welfare of my community is, is being properly addressed. That's my job. And it's now my job, which we've been doing since nineteen seventy-five, to provide ambulance services to those town areas that have requested us to do it. Like I said, we've been doing it for forty-something years, not the association. The village of East Hampton owns the ambulances, pays the LoSAP. We pay the electric for the building. We built the building for the ambulance. We pay for everything. The little bit of money they were receiving is for fraternal activities, so they could hold their holiday parties, so they could have trips to Manhattan and, and go to a play and have dinner. That's what that money was for, and that money accumulated over time. And that money is still under the control of the East Hampton Village Ambulance Association, who still uses that money to pay bills, to provide support to the volunteers. So, what they're telling you is not true. That's all I have to say. Anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
I think that concludes all of the people.
I just have to add one point, only to clear the record. I do not own a billing company, like everything else she said, completely false and untrue. I'd love to own a billing company. No, I, I don't own a billing company. I'm a lawyer.
With that being added, is there someone else who would like to speak? Please identify yourself.
My name's Frank Romeo. I'm on the Board of Fire Commissioners for the Springs Fire District. My only question, I'm not speaking in opposition or in favor of this. The, my question is, would this expansion, the plan for this expansion, would it ever kind of branch out into where you'd be trying to take territories from other fire districts? Or would it be just the Northwest Protection District and, I'm sorry, the Water District or whatever you said? Mayor Larson orders.
Thanks. Thank you. I'll answer that question. We have no intention of billing, number one, and we have no intention of doing anything beyond the contracted areas that we've had with the town for forty-something years. So, that is our only, like, like the lawyer said, when, when I took office and we realized that, we, we had never used Mr. Pinsky's firm before, and when he was looking at all of, when this all became an issue and he was looking at all of our paperwork, he's the one who informed us that technically, we need to have this CON if we're going to operate outside of our jurisdiction. So, that's why this all came about. It just so happens to coincide with all this other nonsense that's going on.
Taylor Vessi, I'm the EMS captain with Bridgehampton Fire Department. I just had two questions since we're going to ask questions. The certified letter that we received in Bridgehampton, which we received on Tuesday, was sent by Suffolk Remsco, as far as I know. It has Reagan Kellerman's name on it, the return address is Suffolk Remsco. So, can you explain, because you said that you sent them. So, how come the lawyer for the applicant is sending them, but they're coming from Suffolk Remsco? If you could just explain that? And then I have a second question.
Hi, Taylor. Good to see you again. As you know, we've sent the letters. The, the confusion is they sent a public hearing announcement, I think, Paul. So, we sent certified letters, as you can see, to all the agencies with return receipts, which are part of your application. So, that, it was a different letter. Our letter went out, I think, in July or so.
Yes.
So, you're referring to a letter that went out over the summer? Okay. Just so you know, Bridgehampton Fire District never received that letter.
That letter as such had no legal significance.
Okay. Fine. I just didn't understand the difference. Thank you.
It's a matter of their putting forth the position and looking for support for that position.
Okay. I just would like to mention that Bridgehampton didn't receive it and we're your neighbor. The other question was about the, the letter that Terry Bertha mentioned, and you refuted that, Brad. So, are you saying that it's made up, that it didn't exist? I mean, I saw the picture of it, so I'm just curious, like, what, what are you saying exactly about the letter? Did it not exist? Did it, was it old? Was it new? Because I have it dated. I just, I'm just curious about that. So, if you could please tell us.
Yeah, Mary's better, but I could say this. Facts matter, and the fact is, volunteers respond, paid respond, volunteers will always respond as long as they're around, which hopefully will be as long after I'm done with this, and paid, they all respond. So, well, I can't, I can't speak for a letter that you have seen. I can tell you what happens every single day. Paid respond, volunteer respond, Mary Mott's here if she wants to come and speak. So, Mary will come down. The volunteers are alive, well and active, and nothing is going to change. I cannot explain that enough. Nothing is changing except two phrases on the ambulance service certificate legitimizing what they've been doing since the twenties.
Good evening. My name is Mary Mott.
Good evening, my name is Mary Mott, chief of the East Hampton Village EMS. In terms of the mutual aid agreement, when that first became a policy out here with the East Hampton, actually the local EMS departments, I was one of the people that was on that committee, that put together the entire mutual aid plan. I'm well aware of what's in it, and how we're operating within that document. The letter, or the piece that is in question, said that, yes, that is true, the last paid provider, if there's a mutual aid, they will stay in district. However, if it's a call that is of extreme importance, and a quick response, cardiac arrest, difficulty breathing, severe trauma, any of those type calls, that paid responder will indeed go to that call. But in terms of the mutual aid itself, there was never a non-agreement. We have volunteers, I myself have gone, just in this year alone, to two mutual aids. I go to mutual aids to all the local departments when it's needed. We are not following the policy at all. I believe that that one piece, that one paper that was posted, a picture was taken, it was used to weaponize, I mean, you're listening to the angst that's coming from a couple of people, and it was totally blown out of the reality of what the intention was. We are responding to mutual aids, we have never stopped responding to mutual aids, and I guess that's just all I need to say about mutual aids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so just to be clear, it did exist. The volunteers, yes, always could still come, but the tenor of things changed a little bit, and I just, I appreciate the clarification, but it does exist. Thank you.
There being no other hands raised, I think we can call this part of the hearing to a close. In an abundance of caution, to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to present whatever they might wish to the panel and to Remsco, I'm going to hold this hearing open until the close of business next Friday. That will be for the submission of any written comments that anyone might possibly wish to add to what we have done tonight. And the written comments will be considered with the same weight as the people who've made verbal presentations this evening. It should be addressed to Remsco. 360 Yappank Avenue, Yappank, New York, 11980. There being nothing further, we thank you all for your attendance, and we shall make a considered decision based upon what we've heard, and what we may hear in the future.